Here are the meeting notes right here. Rules of speaking. To ensure the maximum opportunity for all attendees to be heard, the following guidelines apply. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to type their questions in the chat box or raise their hand using the raise hand function in the online Zoom platform, which is indicated by a hand. If accessing the meeting, use your phone and if you have a comment, indicate this by pressing the symbol 3. This will show the moderator that the person calling from that number wishes to speak. To mute, unmute your phone, press 6. Please wait until recognized by the chair to begin comments and address those comments to the chair. All official reports, comments, or concerns shall be three minutes or less. Please, Kokoa, to help all attendees the opportunity to hear presentations and comments, please place your device on mute until you would like to speak. When you're recognized, unmute yourself and make your comments. Okay, welcome to the Kanihoi Neighborhood Board. Next, we've called the meeting to order. Next item on the agenda is filling of vacancies on the board. We do have three vacancies. Is there anyone who would be willing to fill the vacancies of subdistrict 2, 7, or 8? I'm sorry, it's at 9. 2, 7, and 9. Anyone going once, twice? If there are no, no one offer on that, so let's move on to the next agenda item 3, which is city, state, and monthly reports. Let's begin with Honolulu Fire Department. It's Honolulu Fire Department online. Go ahead, I can't hear you. I think you're still on mute.
How about now? Can you hear me now?
There you go. Thank you.
Sorry, introduce myself again. My name is Joshua Ching-Pickett, captain with the Honolulu Fire Department at the Kanihoi Fire Station. Last week, last month's incident statistics for February. Zero structure fires, zero wildland fires, two nuisance fires, one cooking fire, six activated alarms, 150 medical emergencies, one vehicle MVC with pedestrian, 12 MVCs collision, one mountain rescue. I did receive an email from Donald Sakamoto requesting information regarding three such incidents. He requested some information regarding the nuisance fires. We had nuisance fires, which usually are categorized as outside involving rubbish or something other than a structure, rush, or vehicle. Said, well, give me the nature of these details. One was involving a shopping cart ejecting the box on February 7th, and the other was across from the Hiake up here, also on February 7th, involving a pair of shopping carts. Not sure if that answers the question. Regarding MVCs, MVCs were, can you provide details and where these incidents occurred? Two incidents occurred on Kanihoi Bay Drive, two on Kam Highway, two on the H3 Freeway, and one Ala Loa near the Windward Mall, one on Heli Nama, one on Loihi Street. And lastly, the mountain rescue wanted to answer, provide details and the area that occurred. It occurred in the Huimano area at the top of Huimano Road at the Malu Malu Trail. Incident involved hunters and dogs.
Okay, Sakamoto, thank you for the report and answering my questions. Thank you.
Okay, hopefully that helped. This month's fire safety tip, smoke alarms save lives and are an important part of a home fire escape plan. Properly installed and maintained smoke alarms give occupants early morning to get outside quickly. Install your smoke alarms inside each bedroom and outside the sleeping areas and on every level of the home, including the basement. Keep smoke alarms away from kitchen or bathroom to reduce false alarms. Test all smoke alarms once a month. Press the test button to ensure the alarm is working. If the smoke alarm requires a 9-volt battery, replace the battery annually. And replace all smoke alarms every 10 years or sooner if they do not respond, as 10 years is usually the shelf life for them. Any other questions?
Any other questions for Fire Department? Thank you.
Captain, just a question. There's probably a smoke alarm program for Kapunas. Could you give us an update, because I know there's been a number of Kapunas have inquired about that and there's been no response?
Oh, that is correct. We do have one. It is in conjunction with our community relations office. I can give you the number to the, the captain actually just recently retired, but their office is still open. If you would like the number to that, I can follow up. And it's usually not done on a continuing basis. It's usually once or twice per year when they have enough, I believe, participants, and then they will send out a group that helps to install.
I know. I should have known that.
If you could please share that number with us, we'd appreciate it.
Would you say that again, please?
If you could please share that phone number with us, we'd appreciate it.
Sure, no problem. Let's see. We have community relations, that would be 808-723-7168.
Okay, any other questions? If not, let's go on to, thank you, Honolulu Fire Department.
Thank you.
And let's go with the police, Honolulu Police Department. I believe we don't have a rep, but do we have a? Okay, there you go. Is that Officer Lewis? That's with Police Department. Okay. See, there was the Neighborhood Watch. I think we can do that now with the Neighborhood Watch.
Hi, my name is Lisa Luisato, and I'm from Windward Neighborhood Security Watch Coordinators Group. And I am one of the board members for that group. So, let's see, first of all, I'll let you know what the purpose is. One of the purposes of our group is to work with the community to establish more neighborhood security watches and community policing programs and to support and be a resource for these groups. We participate in community events to promote and educate the public about Neighborhood Security Watch. So the next event that we're going to participate in will be at Windward Mall in May. And our upcoming meeting will be on Saturday, April 27th, at 10:00 a.m. at Ho' Maluhia Garden Visitor Center in Kanihoi. So look for our white banner, which will be, I guess, just outside of the room. And everybody is welcome. I also have the calendars out for this year, which has one meeting per quarter. So the next meeting is on April 27th, and then in the summer, the meeting is on July 27th, followed by October 26th, and that's at 10:00 a.m. on Saturdays at Ho' Maluhia Also, also, the display that I have on the bottom left corner are some, to please check out HPD's site, which is www.honolupd.org. And then you can go out, go to info and resources page and find the HPD data dashboard, which breaks down the sectors for our district. And also, you can link to crime mapping that way. And also, there's lots of information, like even the how-to, like, if the public has questions, you know, about different things, then they even have videos too, that's done by the officers. And so, when you have time, then you can stop by and look at the display board. Yeah, thank you very much.
All right, thank you for coming. Any questions from the board members?
Question.
Chair, go ahead, Mr. Sakamoto.
Thank you for your presentation. I would like to know what date in May is the event, and then?
It's May 11th.
11th, Saturday.
Yeah.
And then Holamia Park, where is it? Pavilion someplace?
At the visitor center.
Oh, visitor center.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yes, yes.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Sir Rich.
Lisa, how many Neighborhood Watch groups, or I don't know what you call them, do we have right now in Kanihoi? And how many potentially could there be? And how big of an area does a Neighborhood Watch consist of?
I think the Neighborhood Watch needs to have a certain amount of people. So, information is on the board. Yep. Yeah, thank you very much for your question.
So, I do have a question. I think when we're in the Neighborhood Board, when we talk about when the HPD does the reports, we do have questions, and oftentimes, it's when we call HPD, it's gone to dispatcher. Do you have a relationship with Kanihoi stations that truly that can be, can be more responsive to community concerns and are tracking issues that way through the station?
Um, we, oh, we work with the community policing team, which works out of the Kailua I think right now, the HPD data dashboard has a lot of information. And any other questions you have, you can call either the community policing team or... Yeah, I think that would be really good. Any, any questions regarding the Neighborhood Watch program? It's good to call the community policing team for the District 4.
Lisa, thank you very much. I was just wondering if you and this board could work with our weekly newspaper here on the Windward side to do an update on key contacts that the Community Watch is alive and well, and that we are trying to engage more people in order to become involved. Could you work, and maybe we can ask Esther for her recommendation as well? But I think that's important, that we start to try to communicate more what you're doing and what the association and group is doing. So, if you could just please make note of that. And thank you, Lisa.
Okay. Yeah, thank you very much, Dale.
Any other questions? Yeah, if there's no further questions, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Next up is Marine Corps Base Hawaii.
Good evening. Thank you, everybody, and Chair, who's online. Kristi Kaluhiwa with the Marine Corps Base. Couple of updates you folks have not heard already, but the MV-22s have been given the go that they can begin to fly again. So we will be having an increase in air traffic, and there's an anticipation for this weekend for some of the air noise to be a little more than the normal. They have a lot to catch up on in regards to training. Just an FYI, though, that the quiet hours are Monday through Thursday, their times that they can train are from 7:30 a.m. until 23:59. On Friday, it's 7:30 to 20:00, and then they're typically closed on Saturdays and Sundays. But there is the availability that if a unit wants to train, they can request that. It does need to get approved, but it is possible. And there is, again, like I said, anticipation that this weekend into the evening hours, there will be training, we'll see the Ospreys flying again. In fact, as I was leaving base this afternoon, I saw one take off. Also, the Bellows camping is going to be closed for the turtle nesting season, which will begin on May 1st through 1st of September. And there was a few questions regarding whether or not that was going to be opened during Labor Day weekend, and I'm going to double-check and confirm that the camping for Bellows will be open or not. There was some questions, and by next meeting, I will be able to let you folks know. Following with the, with the training, this is RIMPAC year. Currently, we have everybody meeting on the continent who will be discussing all the training that we should be anticipating. I should be able to give you folks some anticipated training that will be occurring during RIMPAC and what to be expecting. I do know that there will be a DV event, which should be relatively large, occurring in July. They're expecting most of that training to occur more on the Ko'au or Pyramid Rock area. But I will give you folks more information as it comes in. They're planning now and finalizing all of that within the next two weeks. This past May 7th, I'm sorry, May 7th, that's my son's birthday. It was April 7th. We hosted the Resiliency Ko'ala Poco Resiliency Review with the Office, but I have to read it because their acronym is very long. And we had several board members, one board member from each of the neighborhoods, Guamanalo, Kanihoi, Kailua, Kahalua, and all in attendance, as well as we had, Councilman Esther Piaina had a member from her office, Matt Wire had a member from his office, Lisa Martin was in attendance, Natalia was also in attendance. Big spread of different leaders across the Ko'ala Poco to attend the Resiliency Conference, which was focused on coastal resiliency and, of course, the support of installation. And the, the funding comes down from the Office of Local Defense and Community Cooperation. The grant was given to the University of Hawaii and their Climate Resiliency Collaborative, along with the city and county's Climate Change Office. So, working together, they're going to be addressing and hosting different presentations, which the Neighborhood Boards are going to be targeted, not targeted, that's a bad word. They're gonna, they're gonna ask to come and give a presentation. They are formulating and finalizing everything and want to be able to come and reach out because community outreach is one of their, their focuses. And that is all I have, if you folks have any questions.
Good, thank you. Any questions? I got, I see two here. So let's, let's go with Neil first.
Just a question about quiet times. 23:59 or Ospreys, does that apply to C-130s, same time?
I don't know if that is specific per aircraft, or it's just specific to the airfield itself. So I can follow up to ask if there is specifics.
You know, an Osprey is one thing, a C-130 is quite another.
I agree.
Yeah.
They fly right over my house.
So, my neighborhood, yeah.
Thank you. Donald?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I just got some concern, the environmental on the Marine Base, Kanihoi Marine Base is concerned your landfill. Now, where is that landfill located? The second question is, what is your anticipated time, or how large it is, and what is your anticipated time when it's over capacity and no longer be used? Any other areas you may be looking to have disposable waste and how do you take care hazardous waste? And I noticed next month is Earth Day. I used to work at the Marine Corps Exchange, and we got rid of our plastic bags, but the, I believe the commissary still uses, I don't know if it's diurepo, plastic bags, but what is the course of action to eliminate the plastic products from the commissary?
Your questions. Let me say, the landfill is located on the more Kailua side of the base, closer to the Ulapau Range. I do not know if there is a timeframe or an expected date of when they think that that's going to be filled. I can follow up to find out more information about the landfill. Depending on hazardous waste, I think it depends on what type of hazardous waste. I know that they contract a company to take specific types of hazardous waste away. So I think it depends on what type of hazardous waste you're referring to, such as whether it's biodiesel, oil, you know, from the vehicles, or if it's paint or propane tanks or the such. And then I think your third question was?
A plastic bag.
Plastic bag, yes, that's right. I can find out from the commissary what, what it is. I don't get to shop at the commissary, so I don't know. But I will find out what it is that they use and if there is a plan in place to eliminate. I do know that there are quite a number of companies that provide what looks like a plastic bag, but they are, they are advertising that this is a recyclable, reusable, and biodegradable type of plastic, but I can confirm that.
Well, thank, thank you, because when I worked at the exchange on Earth Day, we would have these green bags that we sell, and then you can put as much merchandise and get a percentage off, but somebody tried to put a TV in there. But thank you, anyway.
Adrielle, I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
So the April 7th meeting that you referred to, when would be the next meeting? And is this by invitation to come to this, these future conferences, I guess? I'm thinking as they present ideas to address resiliency issues?
It is by invitation, however, that was one of the purposes of wanting to come to each of the Neighborhood Boards to do a presentation. Dr. Fletcher from University of Hawaii provided a very extensive data and research of the climate and the coastal projections for the next 30 years. His, his, his data and his presentation was very well done, and some of that is what they would, they would like to come to bring to the boards. Of course, this was a very long meeting, so it would have to be very condensed to, you know, give a lot of time. But they're going to reach out, and then there are working groups that have already been formulated, though it was just April 7th, and so they have not yet begun to coordinate times and dates that they're going to be coming to get together. But yes, the Neighborhood Board would be that time when each of the Ko'ala Poco, different Neighborhoods, would be able to bring their questions.
Right, thank you. Any other questions from the online? If not, thank you for your report. Oh, is there someone raising their hand there? Okay, go ahead. That Kim Tomy? I think you're still muted.
Sorry, yeah, Kim Tomy from Windward Coalition. I just have a question. I didn't catch her last name. Kaluhiwa?
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Okay, is that it? Thank you, Chrissy. Let's go on to next item on the agenda, item number four, board briefs, is Oahu Pentathlon here, or online. Oahu Pentathlon brief. Going once, twice? Okay, if not, let's move on to item, agenda item number five, resident and community We do have noted on here Bayview Driving Range Ball, so if someone would like to speak to that. Okay, please.
I live in Kanihoi, and I have for 50-some years. And we've been in our home that we're in now, off of Kanihoi Bay, near, it's about three streets from the yacht club, and we've been there for 38 years. My husband passed away two years ago. When we first moved to our home where we are now, the house across the street was not in good shape, I will say, but it was not horrific. And it was owned by an older gentleman, and as it turned out, he was a hoarder, a very big-time hoarder, and was somebody that you really couldn't talk to very easily ever because he was kind of lived in his own little world. We tried many times through different agencies to people to see if anything could be done. He had old boats, he had old canoes, he had every imaginable thing in his yard that you can fathom in his driveway. And we knew that we had moved there, and so we just tried to find any help that we could with it. But as long as he was there, there was nothing that could be done. He has several properties around the island. He has passed away some time ago. He left about 15 years ago. He abandoned the house. And since then, people have come over to say that he has to move things away from a boundary in the house, but absolutely nothing else is ever done about it. My husband and I have tried very, very many times to just no, no listening to us or no being able to help. I think that's more what it is, people's hands are tied. And so, now that I'm there alone, I have a neighbor who's a young man in his 60s, not so young, I guess, but for me, that's young. And he has been there for several years, and he was a good neighbor, he always has been, he's a bachelor. But about, I would say, a year and a half ago, he got into drugs, which I think had been a problem for him earlier on, but not when we had been living there. And now he has become completely paranoid, and his paranoia is over this house that is across the street from my house. And so he has gone over there and he's removed things from the property, he's boarded up windows, he's opened the front door, and he's, he's taken things, some wood that he'd want to use from it. But he says that there are people coming up in the night, and they come up through the doors. and they come up through the back hill from the other street. And I know him well enough, and I know what's, I can see what's going on with him now, that there's no making any sense of anything with him. He is completely paranoid. And so he's opened the doors. He's done everything. There's been no one that I've ever seen on that property but him. And so he does all of these things, and then he says other people are coming up there and they're doing it. He put lights, the houses off the ground. He put lights under the house one night. And he has a chair up on his roof where he sits on it and sunbathes. So he's just not there in any way, shape, or form.
Ma'am?
And he doesn't have any...
I could ask you to kind of, is there something you'd like the board to address with this or?
I, I have to say, this is kind of my last time of trying anything around this, because I have had every department in this state. I have read things in the paper many times where places, and I know one of them is a property that now the son owns. I believe the son is very ill right now from the daughter. The daughter comes over. But there's, I feel like it's not safe. I'm afraid the house will be set on fire. He has gone down the street with a machete in his hand, saying he's chasing people and there is no one there.
Ma'am?
And so for me, living, you know, on my own, it's become really a thing of, of great concern.
Thank you.
What's the, what's the address?
Of my house or that house?
Of that house.
One, that, that house is one, oh, it's, I'm sorry. One-one-oh-one, and it's on, I'm so sorry.
Could we get with you afterwards, ma'am?
Kealau Place. And my home is at the top of the natural cul-de-sac where it ends, so it's where people turn around. There are houses, two houses above me, and it's another, it's a private lane, and then there's a private lane on the other side.
Ma'am?
And it goes up.
Ma'am, could you restate your name? And I'd like to talk to you afterwards about this.
Pardon me?
Could you restate your name for the record?
Linda Roberts.
Okay, Roberts.
Mm-hmm.
And can we talk to you afterwards on this? I think we want to, we've, we've heard your concern.
The daughter has nothing to say about it. It's, it's in a trust evidently. And the man, like I said, owns properties that has it.
I don't mean to cut you off right now, but this was a three-minute limits. And then I thought you were going to talk about the golf balls.
Okay.
But if there's no one else talking about the golf balls or any, any other concerns, I guess maybe, Donald, you have something to ask?
Oh, yeah, I have a concern afterwards.
Yeah, we do have other community concerns.
Pardon me?
If you have more, we have other community concerns to address?
No.
We do. So could you, we'll talk to you afterwards.
Uh, sit down?
Yes, please.
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Donald, go ahead.
Yeah, Sakamoto, a board member. I'd like to thank the Department of Transportation, State DOT, for paving my road, Kianaoli Road, striping it. But I noticed that the bridge over the H3 of my road is not striped and has reflectors. So we'd like to know if they can put reflectors and restripe the bridge, access bridge, the road. And then on the city portion, I would like to see striping done on Kianaoli Road to my home, to the Kohla Golf Course or Kohla Golf Course maintenance. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other community concerns? All right, online, we have a hand for Ann. Ann, would you please go ahead? Ann, we can't hear you yet. I think your mic is still muted. It's still muted right now? Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. I want to address the lack of attention to the audible pedestrian signaling issue that I keep bringing up. One of the signals crossing Almoku works very well. The, the one for Kani Ohe Bay Drive, very soft, but it works, but it's very hardly detectable. And the one at Makalani Street does not work. There simply is no audible pedestrian signal. And there were, there are three right there in a row. I mean, in a space of maybe, I don't know, fifty feet, seventy-five feet of one another. But, but I have to cross off three streets. And the one that I start with and end with, if I'm coming back from the other direction, doesn't work. And the, and the one in the middle, marginal. And the, the one furthest away from where I live works very well. So I don't understand, it seems like there is no intention to, to address the issue. And that's, that's all I need to say.
Great, thank you, Ann. Anyone else? I'll just put a plug in here for Honolulu Three-One-One. I did use that app to address one of the kind of maintenance issues. So there's a tree growing in one of our storm drains. Took about three weeks for them to address it, but it did get taken care of or partially taken care of. So I don't know if anyone's tried to use that app and put a request in and get the response from that. Go ahead, Neil.
I'd like to re-bring up our favorite intersection, Dale. That's Lilipuna and Kam Highway. That was scheduled, according to Councilwoman Akiahana, that they were going to fix it by the end of February, which still has not been started. So I imagine it's just part of the behind schedule, but I would like to try and get this intersection straightened out. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Okay, thank you. Is any other resident community concerns? Kim, see your hand up? Go ahead.
Oh, thank you very much, Representative from the DOT, whose name I don't remember. But after the last meeting, and I complained about the potholes on KB Drive, like, two days later, the whole road eased.
All right, thank you. Good to hear some reports out there. All right, if nothing else, let's go on to Agenda Item Number Six, Elected Officials. First up is U.S. Representative Jill Takuta. Or anyone from her office?
Hi, good evening. This is Kendra Oishi here for Congresswoman Jill Takuta. You should have received our March monthly report. Hopefully you received it. If not, we can send it over again. Just a few highlights. The partial government shutdown was averted a couple of weeks ago, during which time about little over a hundred and thirty-three million dollars was appropriated for various community projects within the Second Congressional District. There are a few remaining appropriations bills that we are anticipating being taken up tomorrow to avert further government shutdown. So we're looking forward to, to that. And just also wanted to put in a plug for our congressional art competition. So for anyone who might have students either attending school or living in the Second Congressional District, or maybe teachers, to help spread the word that we have an art competition. The art is due to our office by April nineteen, and each congressional district has a winning piece of art that will be displayed in the U.S. Capitol. And the winners also have an opportunity to go and visit Washington, D.C. So that's pretty cool, too. And I will leave it at that. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. We usually go with the governor's rep next before we take questions. Is there a governor's rep here? If not, any questions for the Congresswoman's rep or the governor's rep? Mr. Sakamoto?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Chair Donald Sakamoto, board member at large. Hi, Kendra. I just got a question. You know, with the high inflation rate going with the costs of what we're paying for food, gas, fuel, et cetera, what is Congresswoman Takuta and the rest of the Congress is doing to address that? And then what is her position about the border where immigrants are coming over by mass amounts of millions and millions? And then we have immigrants that are waiting patiently, maybe thirteen million of them, still waiting for their paperwork to be processed so they can come legally here to the United States to become with their loved ones or become citizens. That's unjust to have to have to wait, and these other people just come right over the border. So that's my quilliana. Thank you. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you. We'll look into those issues, Mr. Sakamoto, and we'll circle back around with you.
Oh, thank you, Kendra.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No further questions for the representative. Thank you for, for your report. Let's go on with the Senate in Honolulu. First, for the mayor's rep.
Beginning Chair, Board Members and Neighborhood Board Participants. This is Andy Koano, Director of Budget and Fiscal Services. Just want to let you know at the city's website, the mayor has his March twenty-twenty-four newsletter posted. We have some other follow-up items and one, one more announcement. The mayor is starting his Meet Your City Officials Town Hall again. They're having their first one tonight at Kapale High School. It started at six-thirty P.M. With regard to the Winward Side, we're going to be at Kailua Intermediate School next week at six-thirty P.M. That's March twenty-eighth. And we're going to be at Ha'ula Elementary School on May thirtieth at seven P.M. With regard, there's some department follow-up issues from last meeting, and I think, I think questions raised. With regard to raised crosswalks at Hayia Elementary School in that area, a resident reported that speeding along Haiku Road is a concern and advocated for raised sidewalk, raised crosswalk. We got a report from DTS that the city, the city plans to install raised crosswalk on Haiku Road at Hayia Street, fronting Hayia Elementary School as a part of a planned roadway rehabilitation and repaving project. A project will follow rehabilitation of Kam Highway. I think that was reported on last meeting. It's in procurement right now. And I just talked to our Director of Design and Construction. It's probably not going to get out of procurement with selection and notice to proceed for about six more months. And that's, that's with regard to the, the main Kamamea Highway roadway rehabilitation. I think, I recall after that, our DTS member Renee last time reported that, you know, complete streets can be done once the roadway rehab is done. With regard to pedestrian crossing lights at Kani Ohe Market, a resident reported that speeding occurs along Kamamea Highway and pedestrians frequent Kani Ohe Market, especially in the evening hours. It was requested that some form of blinking lights installed at the crosswalk, at the intersection of Kam Highway and Pahia Road, be installed for safety. And this has been an area of concern reported a number of times over in recent years. DTS's report is that there is an ongoing project separate from the roadway rehabilitation work to install flashing beacon lights on Kamamea Highway at Pahia Road. But again, I, I believe that date has not been determined. It's going to be after the Kamamea Highway rehab work is done, the rehab work I mentioned earlier. And then lastly, request for lighting at bus stop. Board Member Sakamoto noted that the bus terminal behind Zippy's along Kava Street is very dark and requested additional lighting. DTS, Department of Transit Services, reported that it included a request for a fiscal year twenty-twenty-five capital improvements program to initiate improvements at the Bus Transit Center along Kava Street. Proposed improvements include design and construction of new pavement to reinforce the existing roadway to better support bus loads and other amenities for bus riders, including bus stop, bus stop lighting. Department of Design and Construction also reported that the illumination from existing streetlights along Kava Street is currently adequate for roadway classification, for roadway classification of that street. And they're looking at remotely increasing light output from streetlights located on the opposite side of the bus terminus. DDC is recommending that Department of Transportation Services, DTS, install lighted bus shelters at the bus terminus similar to the one at the Waipahu Transit Center. So they're looking at doing the lighting or starting the process next year, fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. I'll stop in that and hold for questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Koano. Go with Vice Chair, Councilwoman Esther Kiyana first.
Aloha and good evening. I did want to briefly talk about Lilipuna Road and Kamamea Highway. Director Koano, I don't know if you call. I was asking these questions at the budget hearing. So it is true that with regard to DDC, their rehabilitation project is going to take longer. But, you know, my staffer and I, we drive there when we do in-site visits, and I actually, I didn't know how to describe it, so I said it was Hamajang. And I really, I asked the Department of Transportation Services, at least in the interim, to make, have a fix before the longer term. And so that fix is going to be in May. And I tried to see if they, they could speed it up. So Director Koano, we may need your help, because they said that they're going to need the K'Kua of the Department of Budget and Fiscal Services to get the final clearance for a short, short-term fix. I wanted to talk to everybody tonight about a resolution that we had a hearing on. It relates to the city council's opposition to state density bills, as you guys have probably heard. And so it was passed today, and we have grave concerns that the bill that will likely be moving, which is a senate version, will allow subdivision into two thousand square foot lots, and each lot will be allowed three dwelling units. Kani Ohe is affected. So unless you live in the SMA Special Management Area, all of Oahu is affected. So this is not isolated to the city. We are going to have a full council hearing on Monday, and I could urge the neighborhood board to just consider it. But I, I will be also relying on our Kani Ohe state lawmakers to hopefully try to modify the bill if it does move forward. We are asking that Honolulu be exempted. Another resolution, and this is all going to be in the chat box. Jaren is putting it in right now. A resolution urging the Department of Parks and Recreation to make an official request for the use of State Department of Education facilities. to ensure the availability of school grounds for recreational purposes. I've heard from a lot of frustrated coaches and parents who feel that with the limited amount of fields for ASO and other sports that it's unfair. And I was not aware that post-COVID, the Department of Education did not allow for Parks and Rec to utilize their school grounds, and that's unacceptable. So that's one thing that I did. But second, I asked the Honolulu Fire Department if they're going to be using the two acres of land that they have next to Ben Parker Elementary, and they said no. And I said, okay, so give it to the Department of Parks and Recreation, right? So they were already in the process. I talked to Laura Thielen. And it's just a matter of transfer and that would be two more acres at least for availability of fields for, for our youth. Lastly, well, actually not lastly yet, Lily Puna Place forty-five thirty-one, as you know, Judy Tomashiro and many in the neighborhood have been completely frustrated with a home that has had illegal construction and short-term rental activity. And so an update on that is a notice of order was issued on March fifth twenty twenty-four for the illegal construction. Initial fine is $200 and if it's not corrected by April fourth, it'd be $200 per day. With regard to the short-term rental illegality, a notice of violation has been issued on February twenty-nine and we were going to put in the chat box, the short-term rental hotline. So please, if you can, if you ever, if you continue to see illegal short-term rentals at that property or any other property in Kanihohe, please call the hotline. And I just wanted to give a shout out to Congresswoman Jill Takuta. Last year, she had put in a request to the appropriators for $227 million for the Marine Corps Base Hawaii Water Reclamation Compliance Upgrade, and all of the lawmakers, state and myself, supported her. And just recently, in the Consolidated Appropriations Bill, she was able to secure $109 million. And so, as you know, anything that happens on the base not just impacts Kanihohe Bay, but it also impacts Kailua Bay. And that's my report for this evening. If anyone has any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Great report. Any questions, Mr. Sakamoto?
Uh, thank you for the reports for Andy for the mayor and Councilmember Keighana. Donald Sakamoto, Board Member at Large, I have a few questions for Andy and Esther. The thing is, I read in the paper or on the news that there's a increase for salaries for council members and the mayor's administration. I heard Mr. Mayor Belangiati on the Mica Mara Show said he's against it. I don't know how we're going to get the money, where are we going to get it? The, the second question is the Kailua sewer plant. I understand there's going to be an upgrade. How much is that going to cost, Andy? And can you just give an update when it's going to be completed? I, I think it was maybe next year, I read. And then concerned, Bill Two, Councilmember. That is for fair increases for the bus. I understand it's going through council. Can you give an update on that? I'm transportation, I'm really concerned. And then also, there was a concern about the landfill. We've been waiting for a landfill because we have to prepare for whatever might happen if it gets overcapacitated and there was a news. And a raceway, we need a raceway park because there's too many people speeding on our interstate highway, so. Kudos for you folks for giving the report. I just wanted to know if you can answer the questions. Thank you.
Director Quano, if you don't mind, I, let me start with Kailua wastewater because I asked the budgetary questions. Just recently, we had budget hearings. First of all, there are, there's tens of millions of dollars for just overall improvements. But I think the upgrade that you are particularly interested in has to do with some UV, UV system to deal with the exceedance levels of bacteria. And the Director of Environmental Services said that that will be completed by the end of 2025. I said, what are you doing to mitigate excess spills in the meantime? Because we had several last year and he said it is difficult, but they're doing everything possible. So that's with regard to that question. I don't know about Bill Two, so I'm going to have to follow up. With regard to the pay increases, I don't know of any council member at the moment. We can't talk to each other because of Sunshine Law. That was expecting the commission to take that route. They have a final vote and I think for myself, I don't particularly like the fact that it's left to the council to be determining that. I would prefer that we didn't. So I would be, I would have concerns over that, but let me just say about pay equity. Okay, because I'm not the, the, I feel so bad that we are put in a position for the failure of previous councils to not address twenty-nine of forty, twenty-nine in the last forty years where there were no pay increases. And so what the commission did last year was try to make up for it, which they did not have the authority to do piecemeal, three, three percent, three percent. They can only take action on an annual basis. So you raise a good point. I don't know if anybody who has the appetite for an increase, I don't know how, if the commission votes in favor of it in April, we're going to deal with it. I don't know that, whether it be by resolution to formally reject it. So that's something we're still mulling over. And, and that's my reply. I guess, Director Quano, do you have any other comments for all of his questions?
Yeah, I'll share comments on the ones that, you know, I have been privy to. With regard to the increases, Mr. Sakamoto is correct. The mayor issued a letter to the Salary Commission effectively turning down and advising them to not provide increases to Mayor and his cabinet staff. So that, that letter was issued to the Salary Commission, but my understanding is that the Salary Commission will continue to do, you know, continue their due process and, and go through the voting process next month. With regard to landfill, I was a participant of the special board meeting on Wednesday to allow board members and the public to ask the Managing Director's Office questions about the mayor's state of the city address that happened last week. And we, we spent nearly four hours. Managing Director showed a lot of endurance answering questions, but one, one of a series of questions related to landfill. And he reported that while the current landfill on the west side still has capacity, the intent is not to open one on the Wainai Coast. And we're continuing to look at all of our options for the landfill. He mentioned, you know, a private, a private owned location that he couldn't disclose because it's private property and that they're talking to. That, that could be a potential landfill. They're talking about the YPO soccer field area that's been, you know, reported in the news as a possibility. But he fully understands that it's heavily used soccer field, recreation field, and, you know, understands the public interest to keep it that way. And he said that he's going to continue to look at all possible resources and, you know, make a very deliberate research decision, you know, at some point and share more with the public with regard to, you know, those, those final options that we have. There was some discussion about billows, but Managing Director said that billows will, while a possible location, it's too near the water, too near water with possible runoff issues, too near military training grounds and it's at the place that the public uses for beach recreation and camping. So he, he reported that that location is going to be effectively off the list. We're going to pass on that one. With regard to Bill Two, I think we should pass that one on to DTS to provide more input on. And I concur with Vice Chair Keighana's briefing on the UV system with regard to the Kailua wastewater treatment plant. So I'll stop there for further questions.
Any more questions from the board?
Thank you, Andy. Yeah, I, I look forward to follow up on the raceway park. And then kudos for your efforts for helping me with my concerns with Department Facility Maintenance and for my ditch stream. They did a fantastic job and kudos for the Windward Department Facility Maintenance for doing that. Thank you.
Okay, great. I'm really happy for you and your neighbors there.
See hand up from Kim Tomy.
Yeah, thanks, Mo. Esther, for, for that. And I raised the HB three two oh two slash SB, I think it's sixteen thirty about the density. That really concerns me a lot too, and I'm looking forward to having an opportunity and some of our other representatives because this really scares me. If you want to help with family, you know, rentals and housing, it seems to me like low loans might be a better way to go for private people. I don't want to invite developers to come buying up lots and, and turning them into triplexes. Secondly, on the three percent increase, I, I don't oppose it because I know you folks work hard and I appreciate you meetings. Optics make the Salary Commission look kind of stupid because they just raised it sixty-four percent and now they're saying three percent. Could have told us then that this is going to be an annual again. So that's my only comment on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kim. I just want to say, this ground intelligence with regard to the density bills, my understanding is it's going to be, unless something changes because of the hearings that were held today and will have on Monday, is that the moving vehicle will be Senate Bill thirty-two oh two SD two. And the reason being that it has a, you know, an effective date, clear effective date. And so they are likely going to have a joint hearing with three committees. So please contact your state lawmakers to express concerns. We understand the intent, which is to increase affordable units, right? As well as to keep people home, but nothing in the bill provides for that. There are no affordability provisions, nor does it require owner occupancy. So we believe that in ten thousand square foot lot, you're going to be able to divvy it up into five zoning lots of two thousand, which will allow for fifteen dwellings. That would be a primary home for each of the zoning lots and two accessory dwelling units. And the majority of Kanihohe would be eligible for that.
I see two hands up, Sanford and Rep Marioshi. Both Sanford first? Okay, if that's your report, let's hold off on that. Rep Marioshi, is, is this something that you can address these questions here?
Yeah, I wanted to
He called it for your report.
Well, I was going to comment on what Esther was saying about the, the bill for density. So I commented on now, comment on it now while we're talking about it, or I guess I could wait. I just felt like this was the more opportune time to do it.
Okay, um, let me wrap this up and because I think you're up next anyways. But thank you, Council. Thank you, Vice Chair. Appreciate your work on the access to parks. We see the good, the, they're redoing Castle High School football field and track. Hopefully that's more accessible for the community too. Thank you. Okay, let's go on with our state representatives. We'll go in order with our senators and representatives, but Senator Yoho Koali, is he on? If not, Senator Awah? And if there's no rep for Senator Awah, let's go with Representative Igawa. And no representative for Representative Kigal and Representative Scott Marioshi. Where's yours?
All right, I guess I should have just gone. So I want to speak a little bit about the housing bill that Esther brought up, and I, I am also concerned about it. Just for, so everyone knows, I've, I've been voting no on that bill consistently as it's been making its way through the House. I've also had conversations with the Housing Chair in the House who proposed this. And through my conversations with him, it's gotten a little bit better. I actually expressed concerns over the number of units per lot and also the minimum lot size of two thousand. But it used to be four units per lot, which I thought was crazy. I, I still think three is too much. And I've told him that, but at least they're, they are trying to make an effort to move it down to compromise with us. But, you know, in any case, I'm still no one. Esther is absolutely right. It'll change the, the nature of Kanihohe and a lot of other communities on Oahu and the neighbor islands. I explained to the Housing Chair, I think that the way we should be increasing housing is vertical, not horizontal. And what he wants to do is horizontal, just building more and more and more single-family houses and spreading out more and more or, or compacting them more and more. And I think that's going to change the very nature of our neighborhoods. If we want to be expanding housing, I think we really need to be working on transit-oriented development around the rail line and building high density around the rail stations vertically so that people can live near the rail stations and make not only rail more useful, but keep it in, in areas that are better suited for it frankly, and that they won't need cars for. So that, that's, that's why I explained to him that, you know, I was a no vote on it. I appreciate that the Housing Chair is trying something new. You know, I, I do, I do want to encourage legislators and people to try to propose new ideas. I, I just think this one is going in the wrong direction, that's all. So I'm a pretty firm no vote on that one. So thank you, thank you, Esther, for bringing that up though. If, if you want to call my office and, and support my no vote, you're, you're more than welcome to. But, you know, totally up to people. I mean, if, if they want to save their time, they're more than welcome to do that too. So I've got a couple of updates for you. Kanihohe Public Library is now closed. The temporary location is now open as of March seventeenth in Windward Mall, so please go check that out. A little bit more of a limited selection, obviously, but I'm really thankful to the friends of Kanihohe Library for helping to fund that. And, and a big thank you to Windward Mall too for making that space available to them. I've been a little frustrated with the Kamia Highway, Highway repaving between Castle Junction and Hawaiian Memorial Park. That's the repaving I've been pushing for, for years. We all know where the bad section is, right? Between the H three overpass and Holi Memorial Park. It's, it's so bad there. I recently called DOT and told them, hey, why didn't you guys start in the place that was the worst? They're like paving the, the places that weren't too bad off. And that place has gotten really bad through recent rains. So they responded to me. They said that they're going to be, that they're starting the stretch between H three overpass and Poli Highway. And they're going to be tackling that really bad area in mid-April. So that's kind of an update of how long we're going to have to endure the shock-absorbing punishment until mid-April. And that, that work will be done, I believe, during the daytime since it's too near residential lots that they don't want to do nighttime work there to, you know, obviously not disturb people's sleep. Another mid-April update, I, if, if anyone's driven down Kamia Highway, they've seen the kind of growth of trees that's starting to grow. There's like a basically a grove of trees growing in Kamaua Lee Stream. That I've, I've been pushing the city to, to cut those down and clear Kamaua Lee Stream for a little while now. They responded to me today that, that in mid-April, another mid-April project, they're going to be focusing on that. But they did explain that the reason why it's been getting delayed and delayed is because when a tree falls and completely blocks the stream, you know, they have to kind of respond to the emergency situations first. But that situation is quickly becoming an emergency situation. So I, I emphasize to them again that that's going to be a problem and it already is a problem. Uh, so mid-April is is the time that they're gonna be hopefully tackling that. Um, let me see. Mayor Blagjordi's rep already talked about their town hall. Um, my plan to use the Kani'oe sewage treatment plant uh, for aquaculture is is coming along. So hopefully I'll have a better update on that soon. So but thank you to the city for working with us on that. Um, Rep Kitigawa and I are hosting an e-waste recycling drive on June fifteenth from nine to eleven at Castle High School. Uh, but as as we get closer to that date, we'll uh, we'll continue to remind everyone about that. Um, and then lastly, little fire ants have been, I mean, Rep Kitigawa and I and and Senator Keo Kaloli too have been really fighting to control little fire ants, especially with now that they're really spreading along the Windward side. Um, Rep Kitigawa and I have been fighting for it, and we recently got inserted inserted into the budget, one point two million dollars for uh, Hawaii Yat Lab to continue to do treating for uh, little fire ants in residential neighborhoods. It's it's a incredibly important piece of um, of funding. And yet even in the down budget, I mean, if we don't control little fire ants now, we we can't wait a year. In a year, they're gonna be out of control and we'll never stop them. So we, I I'm really hopeful that that's gonna go through. A big thank you to also Rep Kitigawa is Vice Chair of Finance, so she was a big part in pushing that through. Uh, but Senator Keo Kaloli and myself have also been fighting very hard for not only funding for little fire ants for uh, Hawaii Yat Lab, but also for um, just getting the the regulations under control so that we can go and stop them. Uh, let me just do a quick. Yeah, I believe that's it. I'm working on a food forest initiative to collect um, food from fruit trees and things around Kani'oe neighborhood and to distribute them to uh, people who are in need. So I'm gonna be working with, hopefully I'm gonna be meeting with Jerry V uh, for the people pretty soon to to piggyback on some of his efforts as well. Uh, but hopefully I'll have more for you folks uh, sometime in May. And with that, I'll I'll pass on pass on the baton and be open for any questions.
Thank you, Representative. Um, let's, next is Representative Natalia Hesse-Burdick.
Hello, hi, everybody.
Go ahead.
I'm just gonna share my screen on my presentation today. Um, so I'm gonna go through this really quick, uh, just a update on some of the bills because we're about a week past first crossover. So we've got a short-term rental amortization bill HB eighteen thirty-eight. This is a somewhat controversial bill. We got over five hundred pages of testimony on this, mostly from short-term rental owners. Um, but also a lot of testimony from uh, native Hawaiians and people who are getting priced out of paradise. So uh, this bill is still alive for now. It needs to pass through a joint committee from the Senate Judiciary Committee and Ways and Means Committee by April fifth in order to stay alive. Uh, one of the other most popular bills of the year, Clean Elections Bill SB two-three-eight-one. This bill actually stalled in the House a couple of days ago. But there is technically, because it's the second year of a legislative biennium, there's a carryover bill SB fifteen forty-three that made it all the way to conference last year. So it can still uh, remain alive until, I think, the first week of April. It could theoretically be revived. Um, there's a another controversial cannabis legalization bill SB three-three-three-five. Um, this bill is still live for now. It's been through the entire Senate and two committees in the House. But it did have a lot of opposition in the second reading House floor vote, so I don't know if it's gonna have the votes to pass third reading, I think tomorrow. So we'll kind of see how that goes. We'll report on that next month. Um, and then this is the bill that um, Councilmember Kiaina and Rep Matioshi brought up, SB three-two oh two. It'll basically make uh, our communities look like this, where we have very um, close-together densely packed houses on very small lots. Um, it basically requires the counties to allow at least two accessory dwelling units per lot. It reduces the minimum lot size significantly. Uh, it's still alive until the April fifth, uh, because it has that single referral and the sitting county of Honolulu passed a resolution expressing strong concerns, and the Kailua Neighborhood Board also the resolution in opposition. The Kani'oe Neighborhood Board might consider doing that as well. Uh, if you wanna know about the disaster preparedness legislation, I did a whole presentation on them on February twentieth. It's too long to go into now, but I posted it on YouTube at RepNHB if you're interested. And speaking of disaster preparedness, I don't know if you guys heard about the house fire on February eighteenth in Ka'imalino, but um, it was found pretty quickly to have been caused by an e-bike battery exploding. And apparently that's pretty common. So the things, it doesn't matter if it's plugged in, it doesn't matter if it's a full battery, empty battery. They are highly explosive. And so just be, if you have one of these, be really careful where you park it. This one was parked in the garage and it lit the whole house on fire. So uh, if you park them, park them in a space that's away from any flammable materials. Um, the Kani'oe Little Fire Ant Test Kit distribution was so successful that I'm going to do a similar one in Kailua. We're gonna start at Kailua District Park, April sixth at nine AM. Hope you can join me. Here's the link on the QR code to sign up. And um, I wanna show you a really positive success story from Olamana. Um, almost all of the houses in Olamana, this really like isolated neighborhood here, tested their homes very vigilantly, and they found that um, one house did have little fire ants. It was likely brought in by uh, purchasing a plant from a nursery. And everybody around them tested and found out that it was actually localized to just that one house. So they treated that house, they treated all the neighboring surrounding houses, and it's now in the monitoring phase. And so this is a major success story. This shows that early detection can save a whole community from having to deal with the negative fallout of little fire ants. So please test your house, test your neighbors' houses. Uh, early detection is key. And lastly, I wanna leave you with, um, I've been getting complaints about a large organized uh, racing event um, on March third. There were approximately two hundred and fifty vehicles uh, right near the back gate of the um, Marine Corps Base on the H three entrance. And there are smaller events uh, that are kind of reported almost weekly. I get the complaints, HPD gets the complaints. Every time you guys tell me about them, I do contact HPD. Ever since I got elected, I've been contacting them frequently, saying you guys need to increase enforcement, you need to post an officer out there. They've assured me that there is an ongoing investigation, um, but that also HPD is critically understaffed. So if you know anybody who can join HPD, the website is joinHonoluluPD.org to apply. And I went a step further and I contacted the Parks Department to see about the legal racetrack. We've had discussions about this for years, like I wanna say almost a decade or more. Um, and the response was kind of the same as it has been for years. They're still awaiting the finalization of this federal land swap at Kalailoa. And then they're gonna start the permitting process to create that legal racetrack, because I really just think this is gonna continue until we have a safe and legal outlet for these uh, motorcycle and car enthusiasts. So, um, with that, I leave you. Sorry that took so long. Any questions?
All right, thank you. Any questions word for their representatives? Go ahead, Donald.
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair. Uh, Donald Sokomo, enlarged member. Uh, thank you for your reports. I have a few bills that uh, I've been following uh, SB twenty-six thirty. This is the uh, jaywalking bill. Very concerned about uh, that going through. Can you give an update? Then we have the speed enforcement bill, I think was SB twenty-four forty-three. I think it was one of those. Uh, what's going, I heard it was downgraded uh, for uh, having cameras on our interstate highways and uh, freeways and all that. And then uh, this is a concern that uh, I brought up before about cesspools. Um, is there a bill going on? Still uh, viable today, uh, right now in the legislature to mandate cesspool conversions? And then I'm still having issues with the Office of Information Practice, the state, with Sunshine Law for uh, primarily with the counties when they do uh, public meetings. I had to uh, reach out them to check on an agenda that I'm a chair of for Department of Transportation Services, and they clarified what the mistakes, but it's an ongoing thing. And with the Maui fires, uh, we have a lot of money going there, but what what is our future plan, of course, of action for uh, future uh, natural disasters? How are we gonna get the funding? That's a big thing I worried about. Thank you.
A lot of questions, Donald. Uh, your memory is better than mine. Um, I'm gonna, I'll I'll at least speak to the uh, the jaywalking uh, bill. It came to the floor today. I did vote no on it. I I don't think it's an appropriate bill. Um, to be fair, the neighbor island reps and the reps in the more rural communities are saying that they need that uh, because they don't have crosswalks at all sometimes. Um, and a lot of people jaywalk. Now, I I'm not sure that police are actually stopping them for that, and I think that um, a more reasonable version of the bill, if that's the case in the neighbor islands, would make it just applicable to the neighbor islands and not to places like Kani'oe. But while it's still applying to Kani'oe, um, I pointed out that, you know, as as drivers, where when you see a crosswalk, you're kind of on a that someone might be crossing the street. If you're, if you don't see a crosswalk, you assume someone be darting in front of your car. So it 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 creates a very dangerous situation, even if the pedestrian is safe. Uh, I think just drivers aren't aware enough, and I I don't wanna see that bill pass uh, to to jaywalk. And I know you asked a lot of other ones that.
I'll jump in on the cesspool question. Um, there are a couple of cesspool bills still alive. Um, and there is an overarching uh, bill that passed a few years ago requiring them to be updated by twenty fifty. Um, the main thing I wanna keep in mind while we have discussions about cesspools is that there are a lot of cheaper alternatives. It doesn't always cost twenty to fifty thousand dollars to upgrade to either septic or uh, sewer. Um, it's, there are cheaper alternatives like wastewater gardens, incineration toilets, uh, a lot of like creative solutions that I think we can really utilize to to not break the bank for our families while we're also um, not harming the environment. Um, you had asked about two other bills, and I did look them up. They were both still alive, SB two-four-four-three about the Automated Speed Enforcement Program. That bill is alive. It uh, just passed second, or it'll pass second reading tomorrow, I suppose. Uh, and then it's referred to the Committee on Finance, so it just has one more hearing to go through by um, April fifth. And uh, yeah, I'm sorry, Donald. I don't remember the-
Uh, I I believe there was the uh, Sunshine Law. You talked about that last time. Still experiencing issues with the counties uh, complying with their agendas and Officer Information Practice, OIP, is always sending me emails as the chair of this committee, uh, you're violating Sunshine Law, so.
Yeah, unfortunately violations of the Sunshine Law do happen all the time, so it's good that you're in uh, communication with OIP about it, because whenever that happens, basically it nullifies whatever happened at the meeting.
Yeah. Uh, I thank you for your updates, and uh, Scott, thank you for uh, addressing my uh, questions from last month in the email. I appreciate all you done uh, to answer my questions about the track field at Castle and the football field and uh, the school being out early and et cetera, et cetera. I passed it on to the rest of the members and uh, I appreciate your response. Thank you.
I appreciate that, Donald. You're welcome.
Any other questions? I see a hand up for uh, Kim?
Uh, thank you. So I have a couple of questions, quick ones for uh, Natalia and a couple for Scott. So Natalia, is it possible to say what nurseries are safe to buy from for these little fire ants? And on the automated speed enforcement, last month I brought up the issue of can we put uh, something like that on H three where there's doing a lot, a lot of speeding, and the DOT rep Lee Nagano told me that there was nothing that HPD or DOT could do, but there was a bill before the legislature that would allow the implement installation of these regulated uh, speed enforcement devices, but they would only be at schools. Is that correct? And is there anything we can do on H three to to stop the speeding there? So those are my two questions. And I don't know, should I wait for your answer before I ask Scott?
Yeah, okay. So on the first question about which nurseries are safe to buy from, frankly, it is our duty as consumers to ask them when we buy plants, and that's why I haven't been buying plants lately, because every time I go to a store that sells plants, I say, do you test for little fire ants? And they say, oh, we have test kits up at the front. You can grab them. And I say, that is not what I asked you. I asked if you test your stores for little fire ants, and their answer is no. And I tell them, I will not buy from here until you regularly test for little fire ants, and that is our duty as consumers. Um, until, like uh, Matioshi, Senator Keo Kaloli, and I all introduced legislation to require uh, a nursery plant plant licensing program. It's kind of like a plant porno program where they um, go through a licensing program and uh, undergo best practices to test and treat for invasive species, including little fire ants. Uh, the second question about the speed cameras is, they are right. It does require legislation. Um, SB two-four-four-three is the only speed camera legislation that I know of this year, and it would not be applicable to H three. Um, that's something I would be happy to work with you over the interim, or I don't know if you live in my district, but basically whoever's district you work with or you live in, you should reach out to them about drafting legislation during the interim for introduction next year.
Thank you. So um, Scott, thank you so much for your feedback on HB three-two oh two slash, I'm sorry, SB two-three, three-two oh two and SB one-six-three-zero about the density. I agree that horizontal is better than vertical, and the other consideration is for um, and Esther mentioned that it doesn't limit it to to homeowners, residential property owners. The other thing is, as a homeowner who lives in a subdivisible lot, if that bill were passed, I would have to tear down my house and build in order to divide. Have that kind of money. I would be much more, well, I already have a pop-up, but I think for most residents, the way to go is to pop up and maybe make uh, construction loans affordable at the same rate, say, as a mortgage as opposed to a construction loan interest rate. That would help if you're like a homeowner, not, I don't wanna see developers come into my Kailua Keapuka neighborhood and, you know, offer owners enormous sums for their little lot so that they can install triplexes. I I think that's, that's what worries me. I don't wanna see Kani'oe change. Um, then I wanted to ask you about, um, cause I know you've mentioned this before, and I asked last time, but you weren't there. The intersection at Cam Highway and Leaky Leaky. I know that's one of your pet projects. That, so I live in Keapuka, and that intersection is so backed up that the turnoff to Luluku is at certain times of the day, you you have to wait, you know, a couple of lights before you can even get to the turnoff. Is there a way to put a a sign there that says, do not block exit lane? And then there's one up a little bit closer up across from the Kaiser Permanente office building, where there's also a turnaround that's completely blocked. Uh, I would, you know, if people would just not compact those lanes, then people could turn left. So those are-
So that that is a pet project of mine. I I live in Keapuka too. I live a papapani. Um, so I I I understand this. Uh, you know, ever since I started running, um, even before I was elected, uh, I had been advocating for a second left turn lane by Burger King to get people
That's what I think.
onto Leaky Leke, um, because the reason why we're running through, the reason why they put those stupid traffic circles in is because, you know, people turn down Luluku, they zoom, they were zooming down and they were zooming up Anoi uh, to try to cut the light. Uh, so if we just allowed more people through that light and we got the space for it, then I think they could stop stopping through our neighborhood. That that's, that's the real solution. I mean, we could put all the signs we want, but they're just gonna ignore them. There's no way.
Yeah, I, when I, I think that second left-hand turn lane is is absolutely the the right answer, but in the interim, what about the people that live there that can't get into it?
Oh, yeah. People, um, but so I've seen, I've already seen the plans, DOT's plan for creating that second left turn lane. So we're on it. The only problem with the left turn lane, I I say problem, it's maybe not a problem, but i- if they touch that intersection, they legally have to bring the whole thing up to current code. So all the traffic lights, you know, everything. So it's actually a little bit of a bigger project than um, we're anticipating here. Uh, but in the plan, I I actually got them money to do it by first COVID hit, and then, you know, everything went to hell. Um, honestly, during COVID, one of the best, there was no one on the road, so we didn't really have that problem. Um, but it it's back up and in running. It's back to you. Um, let let me follow up with DOT on exactly when they're gonna start that up again. But again, I've seen the plans, all the measurements. I know it's possible to do that second left turn lane, and I'm still pushing for it. I think that's gonna be a real thing. What I don't want it necessarily to do is to put in more temporary solutions that that are gonna be, become kind of permanent, like those traffic circles, and we're gonna have to deal with them forever, you know, all of us living in Keapuka, instead of just going for the real fix to the problem.
Right.
So you talked about the um, the density bill. I I
Yeah, no, you had said that you, you said that vertical was better than horizontal.
Yeah. Yeah, in my. Vertical.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
And I think as a homeowner that it, it, it's, it makes, it gives me more options than having to tear down my entire house. Rebuild, I mean, I think that's more of a developer friendly plan, cause they could come in. I have a home built in nineteen sixty-four. They just could come in, bulldoze it and subdivide my lot into three and, and probably offer me a lot of money. But I don't want to see Kaneohe change. I'd rather see a couple more pop-ups.
Okay. Can we, we move on to, someone else has a, has a hand up. We move on to Scott, who's got his hand up?
That might be.
I think that is Scott.
Is there's another Scott on this online here?
Twice.
With one T?
One T out there, then uh welcome to the club.
One T. Okay.
I just have a really quick question. Do you know if Jared and Lisa are, are in agreement with you on that bill? Uh, Senate Bill thirty-two, oh, two, House Bill sixteen, thirty.
Leave them. I, I, I don't know how Jared's voting. I believe, I believe Rep Kitagawa is in favor of it. And, and you know, she and I usually ever disagree, you know, are usually kind of on the same page about everything. Uh, I'm not exactly sure why she is in agreement with that bill. You'll have to, you'll have to ask her. I don't want to speak for her. Um, as for the subdivision, I don't know if you, how close to me you live, but if you go.
Okay, so.
It's happening already.
I'm playing my time here. Um, I do have some comments I like to give.
Thank you.
First, thank you so much. Thank you very much for your, your work on the density bill, your opposition to that. I think that's um, I think that sentiment is across the board here on the Windward side. It does change the, the fabric of our community. Um, there's also, I think there's a lot of empty lots or many buildings that could be improved, that increases the inventory. And there's a lot of regulatory hurdles that, that are blocking that. So, you know, we do have other ways to increase inventory besides building up. I, one thing I do want to stress, and I speak this as a personally, not as the vice chair or the, the chair of the board, but um, I used to drive across country and I come across community like, man, there's a lot of skunks around here. I'm smelling that a lot more here in Kaneohe and I don't think it's skunks. It's marijuana, people in their cars, smoking marijuana. And I asked your opposition to this bill because we've moved the needle already, um, allowing for medicinal use, whatever. Uh, I think people have taken liberty of that and doing that in their cars, um, causing a danger to our population. Um, I do not like to see that being allowed more than in their own homes, which they're free to do. But if it's on the road, it gives a hazard for all of us. Um, that's what I like to say about that. Thanks.
Yep. And then that's one of the main reasons I'm opposed to this bill and have been one of the more, more vocal opponents to legalizing marijuana is, you know, we've already got drunk drivers. We don't need even more dangers on the road than we already have. Uh, one, one of my many reasons to be in opposition to this bill, but I don't want to speak to, for the other legislators on how they're voting.
All right, thank you. Um, there are no other further questions. Let's go on to our next agenda item, item number seven, community organizations. We have Windward Community College. Oh, uh, thank you for that interjection there. Um, let's um kind of reorder the, the agenda here. We did uh miss HPD earlier. Um, HPD is online now. Um, go ahead with your report.
Good evening, Board. Um, I apologize for my tardiness. It's Monday, which means your computer doesn't agree with you. Um, I present the stats for February. Motor vehicle theft increased from four to six. Burglaries increased from two to six. Thefts increased from seventeen to eighteen. Motor vehicle break-ins remain the same at four and there were no robberies. I'll be willing to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions for HPD? Um, we got a hand from Mr. Sakamoto. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair. Uh, thank you, Sergeant, um, Sanford Ayu. Uh, Donald Sakamoto, Chair, um, Neighborhood Board at large. Thank you for uh the statistics for H three. Uh, kudos for you folks for getting the speedsters on our highway interstate on the Windward side. Uh, concerning uh your uh staff, I look forward to city council trying to, as the client to get more uh staffing for you for the uh District Four. Can you elaborate? Um, how is the new major, who is the new major that replaced Herbert Sorio? Uh, and uh, how is the benefits that are being proposed to have more incentive money to uh recruit more officers? I think that's a good idea to uh, I believe it's twenty-five thousand dollar more to get uh qualified people to apply for the police department, but kudos for what you folks do. Thank you.
Um.
Question.
Is Major Randall Platt, P L A T T. Um, he's been teaching at the academy the last week to the new recruits, so he has not been in the station often. So, but Major Platt has many years of service. He's more than capable. Um, as far as the recruitment bonuses, they are a good thing. Um, what everyone in the department has to realize is that if we don't have any coming out of the academy and coming to the road, nobody gets promoted upward. So we need to fix the bottom of the pyramid before we fix the top. Hopefully the city council can work towards uh some type of retention bonuses for the older officers. Because my classroom, eight people retired already as soon as they were eligible. So you guys already know, if you didn't watch the police commission presentation by our two shop officials, it outlines the kind of dire situation we're in as far as being understaffed and how many people are eligible for retirement each month and each year, et cetera. So something needs to be done. So I hope the city council can work toward that. Hope that answers your question.
Yes, and thank you. Uh, you know, I, I reached out to uh Major Sorio before he left to see if uh our, your reports can be like, uh, like the fire department can be sent to our chair, Ro Moraaki. Ahead of time, so our members can take a look at it, but if you can do that, I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
I'd have to look into whether that's uh authorized or not. I'm not sure. I do not know that answer.
Any other questions? I see a hand up from Representative Natalia Essie Burdick.
Hi, thank you. Um, I got an email from Major Sorio before he left um, saying that he plans to share the stats about the H three motorcycle racing, that large event and just in general, how many um citations they've given and kind of, and said he would give an update on that uh to the Kaneohe Neighborhood Board. So I understand you guys are kind of in the middle of the transition, but I'm hoping maybe next month you can give an update on that.
Um, were the stats not presented?
No, about specifically about the H three motorcycle racing. I did not hear that. Maybe I missed it.
Uh, once, hold on one second.
Was that the March third event?
Yes.
Fifty vehicles?
Yeah, I want to know specifically from that event, how many people were cited, arrested, ticketed. Uh, what is HPD doing to ensure that events like that don't happen again?
I was working that day, but I did not, I don't recall receiving any calls or complaints. Um.
Maybe, um, can you give me your email address and I will forward you the letter that I got co-signed by over a hundred residents who said they all called the police that day.
Okay, I'll, I'll send it to you. Um, I'll email you.
Thank you.
Hmm.
And Rep Mariyoshi, you also have your hand up.
Just wanted to thank HPD. Um, we're dealing with the kind of a gambling house problem in Pohala. Um, and HPD's been, been very responsive. I really appreciate them uh stepping in and then trying to get that problem under control. So I just want to thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Yeah, those need to be addressed because they attract people that are unwanted in the area, no matter where the area.
Definitely. And then this one's right next to the senior center. So, you know, a whole nother host of problems with that. Appreciate it though.
All right, any more questions for HPD?
Uh, hi, I had a question for uh Mr. Mariyoshi.
And who's this?
This Scott.
Okay, the other Scott with a one T. Okay, go ahead.
Um, I had a, I had a question about uh House Bill two, four, three, six um, and what his stance was on it. Uh, I want to get a change without parental consent. And I just wanted to know how you felt about that. Thank you.
Well, great to see another Scott with one T. That, that, that's for sure. Um, sorry, we, we don't really know the bill's numbers by heart. What, what, what does that bill have to do with?
It is, um, it's for sex changes under the age of, or for the the age of fourteen and over, you can get a sex change without parental consent.
Uh, I, I don't think that there's any bill like that coming through the legislature, not, not that I've seen. There is a bill that's being misconstrued as such. It, but that bill definitely requires parental consent. So there's nothing in that bill. If, if this is the bill I'm thinking of, there's nothing in that bill that would allow um anything without parental consent.
If I can just jump in there, it's a.
Thank you.
Treatment for STIs.
On that note, if it did do it without parental consent, I think I'd be a yes. So that, that's not okay.
Okay, um. Cecil has, Cecil Downing's question.
Uh, this is for the police officer.
Yes, sir.
Yes, uh, he was uh unfortunately uh stopped for speeding uh on the H three. And uh, the uh officer met me at the Kaiboo off-ramp. And uh, I was doing twenty-three over the speed limit. And he uh very kindly allowed me to walk. So uh, I, I was, you know, somewhat shocked, but uh uh in hindsight, I, I got home and I thought, you know, that, that, that guy was extraordinarily nice to me. So I went to the Kaneohe station to get some contact information so I could maybe do something nice for him, send him a card or do something, you know, and, and uh, I went in the station there and one of the guy was rather curt and uh he, he was not in uniform, so I have no idea uh what his status was, but he acted like he was doing me a favor and I was just, you know, trying to get some information so I could uh contact this guy. It was not, it was uh very disappointing. I eventually did get him. Uh, matter of fact, uh, I, I called the traffic department and uh, as luck would have it, he happened to be there that time. So so I, I was able to talk to him and uh, he declined to uh uh let me send him anything. He said he couldn't take any kind of gifts or anything like that. And he said he was happy that I just took the time to call him. But I, I guess my point is whoever is at the Kaneohe office, uh, again, not in uniform is certainly could have been a little more congenial to, to a person of the public there.
What is your name, sir?
Cecil, Cecil Downing.
So Downing, if you ever experience um the situation like that where you are less than satisfied with how you were treated, please ask for a supervisor.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions from, or comments from the public? If not, thank you, Donald Police Department.
Good night.
Appreciate your. Yep, have a good night. All right, let's go on with our agenda item, our seven community organizations. Do we have Windward Community College? If not, um Hakipuu Learning Center. Okay, I don't think we have Hakipuu Learning Center online or in the room. Next agenda item is item number eight, Board Business, Approval of Regular Meeting Minutes. The board members have uh reviewed the minutes. Is there a motion to accept the minutes? Motion by.
Are we in, do we have quorum? Oh, can I make an announcement?
Um, can we approve the minutes first?
Okay.
Is there a second?
This is Elana Bryant, second.
All right, we got a second. Um.
Just to clarify, is this uh NCO's version or Sakamoto's version?
Sakam, yes, my question.
Okay, so the motion, can we restate the motion to accept the minutes, Sakamoto's version? Uh, so moved by Board Member Neil Fytel and second. Aye, aye, great, aye, great. Give it this. Okay, any opposed? All right, discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to uh thank everybody for approving the minutes that I did and uh I'll continue to support uh doing that. So thank you. And Spencer?
If no further discussion, um all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing no opposition, motions are approved. Okay, let's go to next agenda item. Establish Permanent Interaction Group for Homeless Initiative. Spencer, we need a motion to establish or to conduct this. Okay, so this is from last month where um there's issue or concern about the Pohale and um and requests to establish permanent interaction group. So is there a motion to establish the Permanent Interaction Group for Homeless Initiative?
Mr. Sakamoto uh motions to have a big committee.
Second.
Right, second by Neil. Um, any discussion? Okay. We, um, it's called a question. We can go ahead and call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing no opposition, motion is passed. Next agenda item is volunteers for Community Engagement Committee. Would anyone like to speak to that? I guess this agenda item is on here because we do have a Facebook page and a blog. Previously, we had a previous board member who was managing that, also with um board member Elena Bryant. Um, she is willing to pass over that responsibility for any other members to um contribute to the Facebook page or the blog. If you're interested, please let me know. I, I do have the keys to the kingdom now, so um, and I'm willing to share that with you and for your participation in that. Okay. Next item is volunteers for Questionscribe. Is there someone who had brought that up for the agenda? Okay. Um, is Mo Radke, Chair, are you available to speak? Okay, so I guess what the agenda item is for someone to take questions or record all the questions that are being asked here and to have a follow-up with that. We have a volunteer for that.
Yeah, I'm able to speak. Sorry, I couldn't find the button.
Okay, all right, go ahead, Chair.
Yeah, you were, you were covering it just fine. Um, again, I apologize to everybody. I'm in Seattle taking care of my mother right now. Um, and listening in on the meeting in case you needed quorum, but uh the scribe was what was discussed at the last meeting. And we were going to start keeping track of the questions that were asked of our guests and trying to be a little bit more accountable for them to be responding. And um uh, that's what we were looking for, was it was kind of a new position for somebody on the board to as part of listening in, but also keep track of questions that are not answered. So we are able to follow up. Is there anyone that's interested in uh doing that? Is there anyone that's interested in, uh, doing that? I'm not seeing anybody nor hearing.
Okay, I think usually when the chair asks for something, the vice chair has to pick it up, right? I, I can attempt to, but, um, but you might not be able to read my handwriting afterwards, but.
Well, that's a great start. Thank you.
Okay, um, if we're done with that agenda item, let's go on to, uh, agenda item number nine, Board Committee Reports and Assignments. Does anyone have any, any report from their committee assignments or meetings they've attended?
Neil, do you have anything? If not. Uh, just as a reminder, on April eighth is the beginning of the Technician Class Ham Radio, uh, certification process. And, uh, if you need to reach out to someone, please let me know. I have his name in contact. But again, this is something that we recommend as many of the board members as possible become ham upper, ham radio operators in case of emergency.
Go ahead, Donald.
Just wanted to give an update. Uh, you know, I, I attended, uh, at the Winter Mall, I think Dale Carson, uh, Drew yourself, Vice Chair, and some others, uh, the HPD meet and greet, uh, Captain Joe Gonzalez and the other officers of District Four. It was a wonderful event, was able to talk. Uh, Council Member Estacayana was there and Scott Mariyoshi and others. Uh, it's good to come out and meet with them and talk story and so engage. So it was a wonderful event and I'm glad I was able to go and to participate in that, uh, openness with, uh, the new captain and other officers of our wonderful District Four. Thank you. Chair, Elena.
Okay, Elena, go ahead.
Yeah, just wanted to give a brief update on the Kanyoei Bay Regional Council. Um, so the council is, um, receiving regular reports from, um, Kanyehem Marine Corps Base and the Navy on the damage that was done, um, by the Navy plane that landed in the bay. And, um, it's our understanding that DLR is working on a assessment report that will, um, be able to kind of give us a better sense of the damage and, you know, any restoration work that needs to be done. Um, so that's something that we're actively monitoring. If folks are interested, um, our next meeting is on the first Tuesday of the month. Um, and I'm sorry, second Tuesday. So our next meeting is April ninth, um, at six o'clock. But that's, that's all I wanted to share tonight.
Okay, I do have two things. Um, one, to reiterate, reiterate, the May eleventh, uh, Community Emergency Response Fair or Emergency Preparedness Fair, we do have opportunity for the board members to man a table there and talk to community members. Um, and then also another meeting I attended with stakeholders meeting for, uh, Kamehameha Schools, updating their Hia Plan. So after, after two years of, on hiatus, they're back to looking at that. So they'll, they plan to have another meeting for the public, um, in the next two months. So we'll let you know when that meeting is or when they'll have that. So that's all I have.
And Don, Vice Chair, uh, I commend you for being on the Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization Citizen Advisory Committee. I, I'm there too, but as a, uh, separate entity, but thank you for being the vice chair of that committee also.
Okay, if there are no other board reports, um, next item number ten is announcements. I just have one announcement here. Next regular board meeting is Thursday, April eighteenth at six thirty PM at Ben Parker Elementary. Um, would also be available online with, uh, virtual login credentials. Right? Any other announcements?
I'd like to, uh, Sakamoto here, thank, uh, Spencer Johnson and, uh, the wonderful crew of the Olelo to facilitate this and everybody to participate in. The board members, the community, those online and those present and all our, uh, uh, representatives for coming out. Uh, it's wonderful to have this type of meeting. So I commend everybody and aloha.
Mr., go ahead.
Um, I have been getting, um, information about that meeting in regards to, um, Kamehameha Schools and that upcoming meeting. I attended those last meetings a couple of years ago. And of course, the conversation at that time was where they're going to build a hotel. So the date is Wednesday, April the third, five PM to six thirty. And the register, you have to register in order to get the link to attend it. And it's going to be on Zoom. Um, I have a phone number and a, um, a person that you can call, Thomas P. Ilani Smith. The phone number is eight oh eight, four, four, one, two, one, four, two. If you want to, um, get the link or if you want to, um, get the email sent to you so that you can register and then get the link.
All right, thank you. See. Cecil, you have an announcement?
Uh, at, uh, our meeting last December, we had some, uh, difficulties getting into the, uh, building here. So, uh, I suggested to Mo that, uh, we just had the meeting at, at, uh, my house and it was, uh, it was a potluck. And I just wanted to say to the board, I have never had a nicer bunch of people under my roof all at the same time. And, uh, looking forward to doing it again.
Cecil. Very kind words. Okay, so I guess we're at agenda number, agenda item number eleven, Adjournment. There are no further business, board business. Is there a motion adjourned? Saka motions, person second. Any opposed? No opposition, we are adjourned. Time now, eight twenty-seven.